Time limit for your comments and go up to the microphone and state your name and address for the city clerk if you would.
Good evening. I'm Ralph Donegan. I live at 216 East Lake Street, right next to the movie theater in town. The consent agreement, I'm not exactly sure what this means. Did you just approve the car crews in front of our house?
Yes, that's what took place.
Did you ever ask? When this cruise first started, they said they would come every year and ask if we wanted it. They came one year, we said, "We'll try it this year." The next year they came, we said, "We don't want this. It's too late, the city's already approved it." And it's been approved every year without even asking us. It's like, the police have something on their website. If you have a block party, you have to have everybody on that block agreeing to close the street. That's basically a block party. You're closing our street, but you've yet to ask us, and it says if one person disagrees on that whole block, you can't have that block party. But you guys, without asking any of the residents, have a block party four or five times a year, never ask us, and just assume that we're okay with it. We're not okay with it. We've had numerous problems. Cars been hit, no places to park. I wake up at 3:00 in the morning, I'm not allowed to park in my driveway till 9:30 at night. I can't park at 9:30 at night, wake up at 3:00 in the morning and drive a truck all day. My wife gets home at 6:00 o'clock, high heels, purse, briefcase, computer. She has to park a block away to walk home. I don't think any of you guys would do that. None of you would come to work five hours of sleep. If you start at 7:00 in the morning, would you really go to bed at 12:30 at night or 1:30 at night, just so you could have a party in front of your house that you don't want? Very disappointed that, boom, here it is, it's been approved, and you never even talked to us. And I've talked to at least three or four people sitting in front of me, telling you I did not want this last year. Thank you.
Now, closed public comment, and we'll move on to the dis... Oh, we have some, okay.
My name is Stacy Kissel. I live at 228 East Lake Street, two houses down from the previous speaker. I'm just here to support my neighbor and kind of back up what he said. We were asked one time, right at the very beginning, and we were supportive of it, but over the years, it's really just grown pretty cumbersome, pretty large. It's, you know, one thing to live close to downtown and understand that you share, you know, this historic house with the town and appreciate that, but it's another thing when you have, like, strangers camped out and chairs all over your front lawn. I'm just a little concerned what's going to happen now that Lake Street Tavern is closed, which was kind of their headquarters. I don't really know how that's going to spill out into the town. But again, you know, like, that's two of us on a block of four houses that really are not in support of the current location. I'm not saying shut it down. I'm all for everybody having a good time, but I'd really like people to look at where it's exactly mapped out. Maybe some other parts of the neighborhood can share the love, and we can kind of relocate. But the way it's currently set up, it's really loud. Even, you know, we can't enjoy, like, windows open, anything like that. There's the DJ down there with the same music that you hear every single time, just blaring, and, you know, it's just kind of an annoyance, really more so than anything. And like I said, I'm not saying shut it down. I'm all for everyone having a good time, but I'd really like for us to be considered as the people that live on the block. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jennifer Donegan, 216 East Lake Street, the wife of Ralph. Just wanted to make sure everyone got a copy of the email that I had sent this morning with the letter asking the council to vote no on the consent agenda item. If you didn't get that, I'm sorry, but I had sent it out this morning. It was a full page and a half letter stating the reasons why we wanted not to shut down the Motor Fest and not shut down the car crews, but to shut, have, vote no on the closing of the street. And it was laid out on the letter that I wrote. So I know that there was two things that you voted on. One was to yes/no on Motor Fest, yes/no on the Lake Street Cruisin', and then yes/no on the closing of the streets. And what I was asking for was the no on the closing of the streets. So I wanted to make sure that that was fully, everyone was fully aware, and if you guys did not read this, I get that, but please try to read things from your constituents. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, we will close public comment and move on to a discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're pretty excited for opening day of the farmer's market on Saturday, May 4th. We have currently 71 vendors scheduled for that date. It's going to be a great day, a great opening day for the market, and the season is looking to be pretty good as well. So another big event that we have coming up, the farmer's market on June 1st is a food truck rally. I think we're at about eight or nine food trucks for that currently, and we'll be, again, looking to close a portion of Lafayette between 10 Mile and Liberty to accommodate the food trucks into the street. We're looking at around 60 to 65 vendors for just about every market day from May through October. So that is, I mean, the market's just shaping up to be fantastic. In the near future, we'll be, I'll be coming to you with two redevelopment liquor licenses for 228 South Lafayette, which is the former Third Monk location, and 127 East Lake Street, which is the former Lake Street Tavern location. Both of those individuals are going to be seeking a redevelopment liquor license, which they can apply for when we have, no longer have any Class C licenses available in the city. The flower baskets will be going up normally, when they normally do, which is just before the Memorial Day Parade. So those are going to be looking good again. We use the same vendor that we have in the past, and the color arrangement is going to be similar to what it was last year, so like some yellow whites and purples. And finally, we're looking at installing six to 10 bike racks in the downtown. I'm currently getting quotes for that. I got one back today, and they told me the lead time for fabrication and stuff is about six to eight weeks, so we'll probably be looking at the later part of the summer to have those installed downtown. So yeah, that's it for me. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone have questions for the DDA Director? Councilmember Kibble?
Just out of curiosity, is it, are the bike racks out of a catalog, or is it Superb or somebody local?
I have not contacted Superb yet. There's a company out of Grand Rapids who provided me with the first quote, but I'll be, I'll be reaching out to Superb too, since they're local.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Nate.
Thank you.
Moving on to the police chief's report. I'm sorry, the fire chief's report, my apologies. And today we have Fire Marshal Brad Moynihan.
Good evening, Council. As of today, we have 356 incidents that we have responded to. The month of April, we've done 14 annual inspections on our businesses, done seven plan reviews. We started doing hydrant flushing. We're doing the northwest quadrant of the city. And don't forget that we have the open house on May 18th from 11:00 to 3:00. That's all I have.
Questions from, yes?
Thank you. The hydrant flushing, did you happen to do Lexington Place, which is right there, sub behind the Rite Aid?
All that we've done so far is Trotters Point.
Okay. I had some residents complain about current water.
Yeah, we got a call from the water department asking different areas of the city, and the only sub that we've done so far is Trotters Point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Fire Marshal Moynihan? I did see a couple of residents did complain about the yellow tinted water in Trotters Point, so it's good that you brought that up, so they know what the cause is there.
Yep, and we'll also be putting it out on our social media accounts as well.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on to the police chief's report with Chief Bocky this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Just got a couple of things tonight. I was happy to help out with the creek cleanup yesterday. There was quite a few people out there. Fire Chief Thorington and I were by Kroger behind that building there and was cleaning up. There was a lot of, a lot of trash back there as well. Also, working with Livingston County Dispatch, we're trying to finalize swapping our frequencies with Livingston County Central Dispatch, so we're able to actually talk to Green Oak and Livingston County and those as well. So right now, we have a certain channel that's kind of a general channel for the whole county, and unbeknownst to me, I thought was, I thought that's the channel we needed. Apparently, we didn't. We need the actual PD channels for all of them, so talking with them, hopefully we'll have those channels hooked up to our radios and they'll be able to talk to us as well. And that's, I was told, going to be about three months before we get that all finalized. So we're in the works of doing that as well. And I think that's pretty much all I got. Or Nate, if you've got any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Police Chief Bocky? Councilmember Bogart?
I've noticed radar signs in the neighborhood. Could you speak about those?
Yeah, so we have two. One was recently, we just got repaired. It was down for about three months. So we have two signs that were deployed. One is over at Pontiac Trail and just, just south of the train tracks, and I think the other one, I don't know where the other one is at, I think we're still working on that one to get that up and running. We have issues with batteries sometimes, so they last about two weeks, and then we got to bring them back, charge them for a day, and then send them back out again. And basically, what they do is they, they will record how many cars are going down, they'll count it per, for the two weeks. They'll give you an average speed. They'll give you the highest speed, and they'll give you how many people that are actually obeying the speed limit or within tolerance of what is set on there. We find it a valuable tool as far as when we look at these, like a preliminary traffic study, as far as what the speeds are, and if we need to go ahead and put up additional signs or something like that. But right now, that one's there, and then we'll be able to gather that data, probably, I'm guessing, next week sometime, to tell us exactly what the average speed. I know that we were talking earlier about it. We had one deployed on Hagadorn, oh, I think it was like the last month, and it was able to record the average speed, I think it was like, on Hagadorn was 19 miles per hour. So I understand it's a new road, so we're kind of monitoring that, making sure that people are obeying the speed limit because the people like to go fast on the, on the newer roads, but I just looked at it, it was 19 miles per hour was the average speed over 5,000 cars for those two weeks, so.
The second one's actually on Kestrel Ridge. I see it every day.
Is that, is that, that's got the, the trailer, right, or the?
It's kind of lashed to, I think, like a tree or something. Yeah.
So they put that one out there. All right, they got one out there, okay. Do you have something else?
Yeah, one other follow-up question. Water wars, what can you tell us about that?
Yeah, so that's a senior thing that they basically go out and they try to spray each other with water guns. We go through this every year. We try to let the public know about the water wars. I think we put it on our Facebook today. Usually we get, it's pretty harmless, we don't really get a whole lot of complaints about it. Sometimes we do, but just be aware, it's seniors going out spraying each other with super soakers.
Those are high school seniors, not seniors' seniors.
Well, I don't know. They might, it could be some of the, yeah, it's high school seniors, correct, so. But usually, you know, it's all in good fun, the kids respect one another's, and they use it. We don't, we don't really get a lot of complaints on it, but sometimes we do get calls of people running through our kids, and it's usually just something like that, a harmless, fun time for the, the high school seniors, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kibble?
The radar detectors, is there any way to end up putting a sun, you know, a solar panel on those where you could actually extend the battery light?
We do have a solar panel for one. What I, what we like to do is, we like to deploy two at a time, so we can put them out at certain areas. We do get requests quite a bit. We also ask the public to put it on our Facebook or send us a message, "Hey, can we have it here?" or in their sub, or wherever. So it's just a little bit more mobile for us. We don't have to have that panel sticking out or up, but we like to move them around the city, so everybody gets a kind of a chance to, okay, at least. And then they do ask, or we will tell them, here's how many cars went through, here's your average speed. I know when it comes to slower speeds in a subdivision, we get a lot of people like doing like 30, 40, 50 miles an hour, when really they're only doing like 28 and the 25. It can be deceiving when, when the streets are a little bit narrow, narrower, so. But, you know, the batter, the batteries, we get a pretty good count when it comes to two weeks on the batteries, so.
Oh, you get a, yeah, a frame of what, what kind of actions is going on at least.
Correct, yep, yep, so, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So Chief, in reply to the concerns that were raised here relative to the Lake Street Cruisin' and Motor Fest, I know that you had a meeting with the city manager, with the, the fire department chief, and with the organizers for both of those events, and laid out some, some steps to avoid the problems that have been addressed in the past. Would you like to expand upon that?
Yeah, we were talking about putting up some no, no parking signs on Ree Street. I know we recalled that as well, and putting up parking for the residents on the street. We are going to have officers in the area, we'll have more staffing out there, and I will remind them to keep a close eye on that area as well, so we don't, to make sure that the participants are off the yards. They still can, and they're not blocking the sidewalk because they're not supposed to be blocking the sidewalk, but we will do our due diligence on that and make sure we keep an eye on it. And I'll, I will be there as well, and I usually attend that function for at least four or five hours myself.
Okay. One of the things that was discussed was the, you talked about reserving the parking places and providing a parking permit placard or whatever for the residents in the area.
Yes.
So it was easily to, they would be easily identified as who was authorized to park in that area. And from the discussions that we had previously with Mr. and Mrs. Donegan, they referred to a number of about 11 people at one time, so 11 cars, spaces on either South Reece or and/or East Liberty were going to be set aside and monitored in that fashion. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, that's what the plan is. Like I said, we'll be up and down the sidewalk and in the street ourselves, participating or just making sure that the participants are doing what they got to do. So we'll be out and about, monitoring it, and if there's any issues, we'll, we'll handle it as they come. Hopefully, there won't be, but yes, we'll be out in the area checking it, so.
Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move on to new business number one, award of the bid for Eagle Heights and Brookfield paving contract.
As part of our efforts to make further improvements to roads within the city of South Lyon and a second set of projects associated with our Road Bond project, we have solicited bids for the Eagle Point and Brookfield subdivision paving project. We received three favorable bids, which ranged from $2,780,000 to a high bid of $2,454,000. The lowest responsible bidder was from Florence Cement, who wait their project schedule to see if the project will commence out, or come out of the 2023-2024 budget and/or the 2024-2025 budget years. I've attached a letter from our engineers outlining the recommendations for the award of bid to Florence Cement in the amount of $2,78,944.43 and the bid tab information. And tonight, the possible courses of action or approve or not approve the award of the bid for Eagles Point and Brookfield subdivision to Florence Cement from account number 204451802. I've got two members from HRC here also to answer any questions that you may have regarding the projects.
Councilmember Kibble?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion. To approve the award of the bid for the Eagle Point, Brookfield subdivision paving project, the Florence Cement on the, in the amount of $2,78,944.30, 43 cents, excuse me, that's
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. We have any further discussion regarding this topic?
Just that they were good bids. I mean, that seems like a good number, so.
I have just, just one question, Mike Rowland. I'm just curious, I know in the packet it says you're, you're waiting to see their, their schedule to see what the target completion date is and that. I'm just curious, are they going to do these two subdivisions sequentially or concurrently? Do you have any feel for that?
I don't know yet. They have till September to get them done.
Okay.
So I imagine they'll be working on both at the same time.
Yeah, I was just curious if they'd mentioned it as part of what they're going to put into developing that plan, that's all.
We haven't, yeah.
Okay.
They said they're working on the schedule, and as soon as we get it, we'll update Council.
We'll have the project meeting, then we'll also have a updated subdivision meeting with the residents of both of those neighborhoods as well, after we meet with the contractors and set up those schedules.
Okay. Councilmember Kibble? Just out of curiosity, what's their scale? I mean, is it a very large company or?
Yes.
I mean, could they handle both of them simultaneously?
Yes.
Okay.
And they've indicated they don't see a problem with the schedule. They're a bigger company.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much, guys. Moving on to new business number two.
Did we have a vote on that, Mayor?
Oh, my apologies, my apologies. Thank, thank you very much. So, City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us in a roll call, vote for the approval of the contract.
It'll probably go good.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Most important part. I'll second most. Now we'll move on to new business number two. First reading of the amendment of an ordinance pertaining to the city council meeting time.
At a recent city council meeting, we discussed a possible change to the meeting time for city council meetings from 7:30 PM to 6:30 PM. In order to make this change, we must amend the current ordinance pertaining to city council meeting times. The proposed ordinance amendment amends Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 231, council meetings to change the council meeting time. This time would become effective, or date would become effective would be July 1st, 2024. I've attached the proposed ordinance and the possible courses of action to approve or not approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance amendment.
Councilmember Bogart?
I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2-31, city council meetings to change city council meeting time from 7:30 PM to 6:30 PM.
I'll second that.
A motion is second, any further discussion regarding this item? City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Kibble?
No.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business number three, cost participant agreement for the Pontiac Trail project.
The city of South Lyon is partnering with Oakland County and the Road Commission for Oakland County in a road paving and storm sewer project. The total cost for this project is approximately $8 million. The first part of this project is to complete preliminary engineering and design at a total cost of $513,446. Our portion will be paid for using tri-party funds in the amount of $230,758, which shall be paid through equal contributions by the Road Commission, Oakland County, and the city of South Lyon. Our portion is $76,919. Approving of this cost participation agreement will authorize a payment in process for the preliminary design and engineering on the project. To proceed, the funding for the project will be paid out of account number 401-451-802130. I've attached the cost participation agreement and the possible course of actions ours to approve or not approve the attached cost participation agreement between the Board of County Road Commissioners of the county of Oakland and the city of South Lyon and account number 401-451-802130. Here to answer any questions you may have, and also HRC is here to help answer any other questions.
Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the attached cost participation agreement between the Board of County Road Commissioners of the Oakland County and the city of South Lyon from account number 401-451-802130.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second, any further discussion regarding this particular item?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the participation agreement for the initial review and the engineering and the studying for this project, but the total project cost is about $8 million, as it says in the introduction. Is that also a tri-party share?
No, the tri-party portion is really just a portion of dollars that are allocated through the county of Oakland and the Road Commission for certain road projects that we have within the city. We only have approximately $300,000 or $250,000 total allocated within those tri-party funds, which we've saved up for several years, and we actually had, a third of that is actually up for us to actually pay for. The majority of this project is actually being paid for through federal grants that we received and close to $5 million. The Road Commission is actually the lead agency in this. They will be handling the project, bidding out the process. We will be funding our portion of the project, which is, which is a very minor, which is kind of outlined with it within this, as well as any other additions that may be made for sanitary sewer or water mains, replacements that may be needed, or if we deem to make any improvements, additional improvements for any streetscape improvements that may also be potentially bid out with this project. This is really in the process. The total scope of the project will still be, is still in the process of being determined based upon this preliminary design being done, actually by HRC, who is actually working for the Road Commission on this project, who are also our engineers. So, as we get closer to developing that project, we'll have public informational meetings. We'll be able to tell the public about what the scope of the project is. Right now, it's basically a road and storm sewer project from Nine Mile all the way to the railroad tracks. And once we know more about the depth of the storm sewer, the actual locations, we'll be able to determine what other cost participation we may need to do those other utility replacements that are dedicated to the city of South Lyon.
Okay, so what's your timetable on being able to, to know what that cost roughly is going to be? Because it sounds like right now, if we have about $5 million sitting out there in grant money, roughly, the project is $8 million, and that's in this year's environment, or maybe, maybe possibly next year, that number might move north a little bit, you know, 8.5, maybe close to $9 million by the time it gets done. I assume that our grants that we have is already capped at $5 million. I doubt whether there's any, any increase in those funds. So, roughly, half of the project is going to be paid for by funding, federal funding. The Oakland County Road Commission, will they be kicking in some money for this project also?
They will.
Okay.
Yeah, the Road Commission pays approximately $1.8 million, and about $1 million comes out of the city of South Lyon total. And that's not only engineering, but that's also part for construction as well. But any of the other additional items for city of South Lyon, public utilities for water and sanitary sewer would come out of ours. But we won't know what any of those items are until we develop a further scope after all the engineering is done.
And what's your timetable on that?
So, if we work backwards, construction is expected to start spring 2026, which means...
Two years off, okay.
Yeah, so preliminary design would start towards the end of this year. I think the, fleshing out the, the costs that are going to be city-associated will probably be happening around this time next year, would be my guess, is when we'll have some concrete cost estimates of what the city will need to put forth.
Okay, so we'll have plenty of time to work these numbers into a budget down the line. Okay, that's why I want to make sure, okay.
Good, great point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Have a motion as second, City Clerk Dayton, will you lead us in a roll call vote for this?
Kibble?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much. Move on to discussion of the budget. Anybody have any questions regarding the budget this evening?
Mayor, I would like to give an update, though, and I did...
Sure.
Provide council members information on budget changes that were recommended at our budget meeting. We've enlisted eight or nine items, everything related to social media work, police computers, additional items for DPW Garage, membership and watershed council, additional landscape dollars, the preliminary engineering for this project that we put within the capital improvements, as well as outlining and putting in for future years for capital improvements for that, for that same project. We've updated the budget sheets for, for your review. Please take a look at those. If you have any questions, give us a call, and we'll be discussing this and bringing the budget back before council for adoption at a later meeting.
Any follow-up questions for the city manager regarding the budget?
Comment, I'm glad that we weren't, weren't going cold off of this stuff, so that's good.
Thanks, Paul. We'll open the floor for public comment. Again, please state your name and address for the city clerk, and there is a two-minute time limit if someone would like to provide some comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to the manager's report with city manager Zelnick.
I want to bring up a couple items. The pedestrian bridge at Anover Park was installed, and they did put on the pavement bed on the bridge last Friday. That will be open very soon to the public. Additionally, advising not only council, but the public for additional road projects that will be taking place within the city this year. Besides what you saw here and we discussed tonight, there'll be other Road Commission projects, and one will be the paving of Pontiac Trail from the railroad tracks all the way to Silver Lake Road, paving of Eleven Mile from Pontiac Trail to Milford Road, and paving of Martindale from Ten Mile Road to Eleven Mile Road. So, be aware of those. It'll probably, we're expecting timeframe for mid-June now for those to be, to be worked on, and we'll be updating you as we get more information through the county when those projects will start, or for if there's any items related to detours, or if there's any closures. But we expect that they, as they work on the road, it is a milling overlay, so we expect the roads to be continually open during that project.
Have questions for the city manager, council member Hanson?
I was curious if these road projects, if they're going to stagger them, or I just, my concern would be if they, you know, several were being done at the same time, that that would really kind of impact residents and, and traffic, obviously.
Yeah, I don't think they'll be working on all the project at the same time, but they do in fact try to get as many done as quickly as possible, especially after school lets out. I'm sure there'll be economies of scale through hiring the same contractor to work on, you know, the same four miles or so in that, in that area. But they'll be, I would imagine they'll be staggering as they start to do the milling, then they do the overlays, and so they'll just be continually working in those areas. But we just want to make sure that those are going to be safe projects, and those, those roads, roads are being paid for, not by our bond project, but are being paid through Road Commission of Oakland County funds.
Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several things. Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank the Dunkins for coming in tonight and, and the neighbor that is supporting them. I think it's always important to listen to what our community has to say. I apologize, I've had a day where I was not near a cell phone today, so, court. So, I just couldn't get in, I apologize for, but I did receive it, so I want to get back with you, let you know about that. I, I would like to suggest that the city manager, well, let me first start with this question. Did, when this plan was worked out with the chief, were the Dunkins or any other neighbors invited to that meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, so why don't we, why don't we schedule a meeting? I, I would suggest that these individuals be provided an opportunity to meet with you and the chief of police to discuss with, personally, because that seems to be a concern of theirs, that nobody went to them and listened to them, even though we knew that there were issues. And I think that's important, that we listen to what our constituents are saying. They don't have to come to a meeting, they should have been able to be called or asked, or let's do it that way. Let's talk about this in a professional setting and see if maybe more of their concerns that were addressed in the email letter, which I haven't completely read at all. But maybe some of those issues that were in your letter were not addressed tonight through the discussion with the mayor and the chief, and maybe some additional matters could be addressed. I would just suggest that that meeting, maybe after the meeting tonight, you let the city manager know when you're available. I, I would appreciate that, Paul, if you could, would, would that be something you could do, sit down with them?
Yeah, I know the organizers are going to be in contact with them, I'm not sure when that is going to take place also, but I, I know that's, that's another step...
I would agree.
In, in that particular, in the whole process, and obviously council votes on this, you make the determination whether you approve it or not, but we will definitely have the opportunity to do so. We want to make sure their concerns are addressed.
Okay, so that's good. So, we're on a different path now, so hopefully there'll be a little bit more, some resolution, and whatever, moving forward, that some of your issues, not all of them will be addressed, but at least you've had an opportunity to have someone listen. Next, what I wanted to do is, Paul, I sent you some materials, and I'm getting ahead a little bit on the Westlake project, and I just sort of want to bring out to council kind of what my research has been, what my concerns are, just to air them, not to discuss, not to whatever, just to air them. With the Westlake project, with the issue of, of the wetland, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, and I'm a little bit surprised that the solution to the road in the wetland did not provide a opportunity for maybe some alternate road materials. And I sent you some information on alternate road materials that can be used when constructing a road through a wetland project. And the advantage of alternate road materials, like, like in the videos that I sent, have the advantage of not being as restrictive of the water flow that happens when you put a road in the middle of a wetland, because that's what happens, you're restricting the flow of water. And that, there are some options out there. The state of South Carolina, particularly in Durham, they are doing incredible work in moving into wetland areas with construction, putting in roads, putting in resource accesses that are made with materials that are more, less impactful on the wetland. And I would like maybe to see some of those options that the developer could provide and say, okay, I get it, I get that this development needs to move on, I get we can't hold it up. But on the other hand, there are some options out there that I did not hear discussed, and one of them would be looking at some alternative road components. For example, I must have spent how many hours looking at construction of the road itself in terms of the aggregate materials? And just by enlarging the aggregate materials that are used as the base for a road would allow for more water flow through that road rather than putting in a highly compacted material. That is one of the solutions, is, is upgrading the size of the aggregate that goes into the stone. So, maybe we look at a combination of more environmentally sensitive road construction options, so we can mitigate that impact on that wetland area. Additionally, spent some more time looking at what the state of Texas is doing in terms of constructing wetlands. Now, why is Texas constructing wetlands? Well, I'm not going to go into all of the benefits of why we have wetlands and the ability of the wetlands to purify the water. However, Texas is in need of a purification system, and they are moving towards the wetland concept. So, they are constructing wetlands. They're literally building wetlands in the state of Texas. And I'm saying to myself, if I were a creative developer, why am I not presenting to South Lyon, okay, I'm going to impact about 3,000 square feet of, of wetland on this project, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I am going to construct 3,000 square feet of wetland to replace what I am impacting by my road. So, that's another option out there that I did not hear discussed. I don't know if he has land to do that, but that would be an option that I would consider also. So, I just kind of wanted to let you know, I think I sent you some materials on that, and, you know, I think we need some real good, serious solutions to this issue, and I think the solutions are out there. I really do, but that's just me. So, I wanted to get that out there. Next, on the Roper Barn, I wanted to ask real quick about that. If they were to put up the Roper Barn today, would, would they need to go to the planning commission and present a plan of what it's going to look like? Do they, do they need that? Does that need to be approved by the planning commission, or just a permit coming over here and saying, like a housing permit?
It would need to come before the building department, and it would come before city council, but, you know, they're a long ways off from my understanding from, from doing so. But that's, we have not received any plans, anything at all regarding that. We just know that, you know, they have components of a barn that is being stored, stored on adjoining property. The city still had allocated funds towards the pavement and foundation of that, so that would all have to be worked out as well. It's money that was budgeted this year, it's money that's also budgeted next year, so they're a little bit ways away from any, any, any sort of progress like that.
Okay, all right, and I assume then that they would also have to pay for permits, or would the city be willing to waive those permits?
Well, if it's a city project, we would just be paying basically for our own permit, so.
Okay. Next, I also noticed that Eagle has a, I read the press release a couple, oh, maybe about a week ago. Eagle apparently has a grant program for, for water cleanups, and have we ever applied for one of those grants?
No, council member Hanson and I discussed this year about the potential for applying. We need to know the details regarding all the funds that were allocated as part of this project that we could use to supply them information to apply the, apply for those particular grants. If we are getting funded for those based upon donations that are being made, or volunteer hours and things like that, we can't necessarily collect for those, we would just be able to allocate for funds that the city actually spends on that. And I, and I did see that, you know, the, the grants that were awarded, anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000, depending upon whatever those cleanup efforts actually were.
Yeah, because the grant could be used to buy the gloves, the, the shields that people wore, the bibs, you know, the safety bibs.
Yeah, and that's exactly what Hanson, uh, councilman Hanson and I had discussed, outlining what those costs were, what we did not get reimbursed for, and what we can actually apply for within the upcoming year.
Because one of the suggestions that came out, as I was climbing out of a ditch on Sunday yesterday, is it would be nice maybe to have lawn signs put up, like each of the leaders, like I, I took care of the Princeton area, where the leaders could have a lawn sign to put up in that area saying, you know, this area was, you know, something like, this area was recently cleaned up by volunteers, you know, on the South Lyon Annual Creek Cleanup. Please assist us on keeping this area clean, please do not litter, and maybe keep the lawn sign up, you know, maybe, you know, 20 days, or something like that, as a reminder to people, the, the tremendous effort that went out yesterday in cleaning out the waterways. I mean, that was an incredible effort.
Yeah, if, if we're going to do something like that, I would suggest getting permanent signs, because we'd not want to create more litter, based upon other items that we're going to have to throw out with those paper signs, or those metal things that end up getting discarded within, within dumpsters, but I think it's a good idea.
I'll go back and pick them up. I mean, you know. But anyway, so, so that's what I had for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me some extra time.
Anyone else for the city manager? Councilmember Kivell?
First off, do you have a, a sense of what the balance of the road monies are after this, the Brookdale and Eagle are done?
With the first bond, it'll probably be close to $4 million that we'll still have left over for, for the next couple of years, and then the next bond will actually have to be bid out.
Forecasted at, at all whatever the, the next location might end up being?
No, because we have to still meet with engineers, discuss water, sanitary sewer work being done, condition of roads, again, because we keep trying to update every, every other year, the conditions and looking at certain segments, and based upon where we're going to be doing the project, plus also take into account the 2026 road, 2026 work being done on Pontiac Trail, that we don't want to have anything close to that, that would actually influence that project as well.
Yeah, yeah, that actually, I mean, all the, the construction that you had mentioned earlier, you know, when you look at what's going on with the interstates and all that kind of stuff, it's getting pretty difficult to get from A to B without spending an awful lot of time driving, so. And just one thing I wanted to ask, or wanted to make mention of with the, the vote of the, well, I guess I can do that on my council comment.
Councilmember Hanson?
A quick question, I did notice the demolition of 465 North Mill, the, the interior of it, do we know what business is going to be moving in, or?
I do not have that information, no.
Any other comments for the city manager? Thanks, Paul. Move on to council comments now, and we'll start off with council member Hanson, since it was your day in the spotlight here yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the weather may have started a bit chilly on Sunday, but the volunteers still showed up in record numbers for the 20th Annual South Lyon Creek Cleanup and Earth Day Event. More than 130 volunteers showed up to the event, not including city staff, as well as support staff. Now, even the lieutenant governor and the state's EGLA Eagle Director were in attendance to mark the occasion. Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist spoke to the importance of environmental events, just like the South Lyon Creek Cleanup, and thanked all the volunteers for continuing the cleanup efforts. Eagle Director Rus talked about some of the efforts his office was working on to clean up the environment statewide, and thanked the volunteers for doing their part. The volunteers all put in a lot of effort and completely filled the dumpster, even the lieutenant governor helped to clean up the Yerkes Drain. So, I want to thank all the volunteers that helped to make it such a successful event. I want to thank all the sponsors, South Lyon Area Boy Scout Troop 228, Cub Scouts Pack Thirty-Eight, which were actually the originators of the event, city of South Lyon Department of Public Works Storm Water Management Planning Program, the city of South Lyon Water Department Wellhead Protection Program, the Michigan Seamless Tube and Pipe Company, Vibe Credit Union, Martin's Hardware, Torino's Pizza of South Lyon, Kensington Valley Civic and Club, Larry and Dylan Lead Better, and Witches Hat Brewing Company. So, this was a huge milestone for the city, 20 years of cleanups. The first cleanup 20 years ago saw four volunteers, this one had over 130, and even our lieutenant governor in attendance. So, 20 years down, and this community has the drive to keep going as long as it's needed. Have a happy Earth Day, everyone.
Councilmember Hanson, would you like to speak about the certificate of recognition that the committee received as well?
Well, I'll leave that to you, Mr. Mayor. So, we actually received a certificate of recognition from Alyssa Slotkin's office for the milestone of the event, as well as thanking the volunteers for putting forth the event for as long as we have, and for continuing that event.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to send out, again, a great congratulations to Mark and his wife, his mom, and his brother, and his sister-in-law that are here tonight. Mark, you have a great restaurant, you're well-loved in this community, and I think everybody knows what you do. You're just one of those business owners that doesn't ask for the recognition, you do a lot of charity in this town, and you, you never ask for a pat on the back, ever. And I want to thank you for your incredible humility and your dedication to the city of South Lyon. You really are an incredible individual, Mark. Thank you, thank you so much. I too would like to thank all the people that showed up yesterday, especially those that helped me out of the ditch. My council member friend, Alex, was not around to help me, but I found a way, and some other volunteers that helped, and it was a great event, and we pulled a lot of stuff out. So, I also want to thank all the people who attended the Roper Barn fundraiser at the VFW Hall. It was a great time, a great turnout, and I want to thank everybody. I want to also remind everybody that the Culture Arts Committee is celebrating National Poetry Month this month, and has its display of poets, of poet boards throughout the city. There is a special dedication to Dana Johnson by one of our poets in residence, and that is Josie Kearns. That particular poem is located over next to South Lyon Village Bakery, and it's the one that has the bow on the top. So, please walk around town, enjoy poetry during this month, and thank you to DPW for installing all the poetry boards. And last, the Culture Arts Committee, again, is installing its A and E, which is its Arts and Education Show, later this week with an opening night on May 3rd, that'll be a week from Friday. This show is a great exhibit of the young talent in our high schools. Please support this exhibit and join us on opening night, and thank all the students
and their parents for them coming out and making a contribution to the arts. This particular art exhibit is artwork from the students from the high schools. It's a great exhibit. A lot of these students are going onto art schools, and it's just a great show, and their parents are here, and they're so proud of their kids. So please come out and support the arts, and support their families. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember? Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to acknowledge South Lion Masonic Lodge, number 319, on their sesquicentennial 150 years that the Masons have been in South Lion. A few of us had the opportunity to go to a rededication event and a reception, and it was great to see all the great work and the great people that are involved in this group. One other thing, May 11th is the Youth Entrepreneur Market, which is hosted by the Kensington Valley Civic Town Club. It will be the third year hosting the market. It's a great opportunity for young people to learn how to run a business, how to create products, to set prices, and to market. I've seen a lot of great things happen through that. May 11th is the first event, and it will be at the South Lion Big B. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mosier?
Just real quick, we got two weeks till the next market, the first opening market for the summer here. And like Nate had told us, there's 71 vendors, so there's lots of things to look at, lots of products to choose, lots of food. So I hope to see everybody down there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Kibble?
Yesterday, I was talking to Director Root, I believe, Rus?
Rus.
Yes. As we were going out to the parking lot, and the Westlake development had come up, and, you know, I kind of walked him through some of the complications are, you know, some people are thinking that the bridge is too much, and, you know, I had talked to him about the idea that there's also the danger of driving in an area that will have that much car flow that's not well-suited for it, that it's dangerous, and that, you know, we were hoping that we might end up getting a vote, so that they would end up having a look at this, and then the decision would end up being much easier of whether or not there's a real downside to end up having that bridge in there. We wanted, we asked for the experts, they're the experts, and he was dying to get a shot at it. So I hope that at some point, maybe we re-entertain ourselves with that, and see if that could come to fruition. I also wanted to mention the, well, first off, the no vote on the time of our meeting is solely because I have a concern with people that work late, and they don't have an opportunity to come speak to us directly, rather than having to do things on email and things of that nature. So that was my own contention. Oh, and just simply that I'm really delighted that we've got a full board for Parks and Rec. They're going to be very active this year, and have an awful lot of decisions to make. And, you know, we've got an awful lot of money on their side of the scale there. It'll be great to have them informed and making good decisions on pushing stuff forward, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Tonight, I just want to share something that's taken place recently. As the mayor, I've had the pleasure of addressing the second graders in four of the elementary schools in our area as part of their local government module that they're undertaking. It was obvious that the teachers had worked with their classes to identify some thoughtful questions and some meaningful questions regarding the city and the mayor's responsibility. However, once those questions were exhausted, the questions changed a bit, and I had the opportunity to explain that I don't live in a mansion, don't have a Secret Service detail, do not get to fly in a helicopter, do not drive a Lamborghini, and have not met the president. Finally, they asked, how old are you? I was up for the question, and replied, well, how old do you think I am? First answer was 39. I was good with that. Next reply was 45. I was still good with that. And I said, you know, you're close. I then told them how old I was, and the response from one end of the cafeteria to the other was universal and overwhelming. Whoa! One student punctuated the moment by even further exclaiming that I was as old as his grandpa. I said, well, imagine that. After the decibel level dropped, I replied, so you see, you are never too old or too young to help out in your community. And I would encourage you all to remember that, and share that with your friends and family, and find ways that you can help as well. So I'd like to encourage everyone to see what they can do to help. When the call goes out for volunteers to serve on boards and commissions, like Jordan and Melissa have done with the Parks and Rec Commission, or to help with some of the events we have in town, like Pumpkin Fest, Christmas in July, South Lion Live, and South Lion Eve. So everybody should remember that you are never too young, nor too old, to pitch in and lend a hand in the community. That's all I have, and with that, I'll look for a motion, a second to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, folks.